Welcome back everybody to My Time at Sandrock, this is episode 144 with Adeline. We are heading on out the door. Uh, we're gonna be doing, I'm not sure what yet, just find out. Alright, so I had some orders to make. Let's see if we've got our last lot of orders done, that looks like a very important letter in my letterbox. And it looks like I'm out of water in my cooler, so before I seize the motor on my, um, my generator and blow something up that shouldn't be blown up. Not that anything should be blown up, but this in particular really needs to not be blown up. There we go. I suppose I've been neglecting it, so I should fuel it as well. There we go. Beautiful. Alrighty, let's, um, just grab everything that we've been refining. So we've got six bloodstones out of that last lot of rock. Um, I do need to pick up their meals. We, I did get a little notification that said my barn was messy and needed cleaning up, so I suppose we should stop. And, uh, undo that. And I should empty my backpack to just pound the chickens, because they love. We need to make sure there's some pounds for chickens. Yeah, they're happy about that too, but no, no, no. Their stats are here, their wellbeing is affected by hunger, how often you pet them, and how clean their environment is. Oh wow, okay. When an animal is young, high vitality makes it grow faster. As an adult, high vitality means they'll produce more items for you. You can name your animals, here, I can, oh no, we're not, we are so... I mean, you guys have seen me naming animals in other series, it's, it's not pretty. Um, let's make sure these guys get fed. Add some more. There we go. Alright, we've gathered some stuff here. Boom, let's go. Grab this. Nice. I know, right? And then I'm gonna grab, go into garden mode. Harvest these. Uh, I, wow, everything is ready for harvesting. Come out of garden mode, grab our dew collector. So I'm gonna go so much better with our next series, there's just gonna be quite a few things that I know to do earlier than I, than I did this time and, um, you know, stuff that I didn't know about, how to put things together, but, um, that I'll know this time, so. I am looking forward to ending the series, I'll be interested to hear, um, who you guys would be most interested in seeing. Romance and, um, you know, a focus, what focus you'd like, whether it be on the museum or fishing more earlier or, you know, just, just to hear what you'd like, what you're most interested in seeing in the series. Let's check our letterbox. Letter from Miguel. "Adeline, it appears my time has come. Trudy informed me I have one week until I am taken to Atara. I've appreciated your company and would like to have a final conversation before I face my fate. Thank you for your time, Miguel." From, from Grace. "Adeline, sorry it took me so long to write to you, I kinda got caught up. How's everyone in Sandrock? I've been lit, settled in Atara life again, jumped right back into that busy lifestyle. I've been telling all my professors about the archaeological situation in Sandrock, especially the relics we get from the oasis in the northern ruin. It's all kinda made my head spin again. Well, that's about it so far, just want to get in touch again, if anyone asks, tell them I'm doing great." Grace. Oh, we miss you. Uh, "It's great to hear from you, Sandrock's still developing quickly. Trudy said we're gonna start working some projects alongside the tunnel. I don't know when you'll be coming back, but maybe you won't even recognise it. Did your report go well? Remember you said your boss would interview you when you got back, that must have been nerve wracking, hope everything went smoothly." Uh, no, no, I, I like this one. Oh, I hope she's okay. Alright. "Tumbleweed standard, The Veritable Tunnel and the Human Condition by Ernest. A tunnel to a brighter future, what does a tunnel represent? A liminal space, transitional, inspiring. Everyone's life has a tunnel, your first steps, your first love, your first sip of hot sand tea. The Sandrock, the first drops of rain will be the next tunnel they seek. But this is the tunnel we have now. It's real, tangible, it leads off to distant lands with the promise of a new salvation. A tunnel, a light at the end, sea of sand and silt separating us from them. Them, the future, the connection. A hand held close to your heart, a hand clutching an olive branch, a hope for peace for the future. But what is a tunnel? It is a hole through an object that leads from one place to the next. That is of course, our physical tangible tunnel. But what is a tunnel? Something that brings us to our next destination? In life, we travel through various destinations. I started my life in Atara, writing news articles and novels. But I travelled a tunnel both literally and metaphorically to arrive in Sandrock. Sandrock was my new life, a world of new experiences, a way to find my feet and understand the true world. It started with a tunnel, it ended with a tunnel, it continues with, through a tunnel. A tunnel of dreams, of hopes and desires, for a better future, for everyone." Reported by Ernest." Okay. From Trudy. "Dear Adeline, with the completion of the Road to Portia alongside all that Sandrock has overcome, I think it's hard time for the city to look toward the future. I've decided to put together a meeting to discuss where we go from here and how we can continue to realise the dream laid out by our pre- predecessors. I want therefore to invite you to an important developmental meeting alongside the other industrious citizens of Sandrock. Dinner will be provided by Cityhold and we will discuss our plans for the future. Please come to the Blue Moon Saloon tomorrow evening if you have time." Trudy. Alright, a letter from Ma. "Dear Adeline, your pa and I read that paper. Uh, in that paper, that Sandrock opened the Road to Portia. That's so wonderful, that means Sandrock is really getting better and better, right? Oh, I heard there was an incident with some monsters during construction. Ma Trudy told me in her letter that you weren't hurt, but you need to be more careful. Lots of love, Ma." "Don't worry, the monsters didn't hurt anyone, the reports are exaggerated, the monsters appeared but no one was hurt and we even got rid of them without hurting them. It wasn't easy, but we finally finished. Uh, we've been working on this road for so long, we built a bridge, a bus station, a tunnel, and now it's over, we can all get our water and other goods from Portia. I'm just tired, I'm glad it's over, I didn't really care about..." No, wait. Uh, yeah, I'm not whining about that. I, I'm gonna go with this one, it wasn't easy, but we finished. Wow. Uh, we could, we could do one series where they, we, we choose all of the wrong answers. But I don't really wanna play a bill with that unpleasant. Um. Okay, let's go with this. Sort all, confirm. I hope I kept my sand beds. Oh. Oh my gosh. See, we're getting so many relics now, we really need to do something about that, I'm thinking that's probably good cash stress. Alrighty, now I have deliveries to make. Um, I also have an intriguing blue circle, you know what that intriguing blue circle, that is actually our discussion with Miguel. And as sad as it makes me, because now I have a better understanding of him, I can see how he was fooled and even though he did the wrong thing by us, I think, um, how's he gonna make amends in prison? Uh, anyway. I mean, granted, most people give a chance like that to let us go out and use it to do the wrong thing by you again, but, um, you know, in stories, we can always have hope that that isn't the case. "The light teaches us to forgive, if we can't grow, then who are we as people? You have been sounding more like a minister every day, Burgess. Sandrock is lucky to have someone as pure as you. Well, as much as you deny it, I know you're always preaching from the heart." "I was preaching what I believed, but even then, in my pursuit of my ideal, I ended up precipitating the very thing I was trying to prevent. I wronged you, Burgess, I led you astray, took advantage of you." "That's in the past now, Miguel, besides, I wouldn't be who I am today if it weren't for you. For better or for worse, I can, can't regret the past, we can only look forward into the future." "Ah, well, let me impart one last bit of wisdom to you. Sometimes, when you're so very, very sure, you still need to reflect and ask the tough questions. I have given this much thought while I've been in here and, even though I clung so hard to my ideal of an orderly world, what right did I have to force it on anyone else? That makes me no better than the fools who caused the day of calamity." Wow. "Adeline, you came, I'm glad to see you. Burgess was giving me one last sermon on forgiveness." "I, I've seen Miguel's growth, he's not the man he used to be. He's seen the error of his ways, but now they still wanna lock him up forever." "Oh, Burgess." "I told you, Burgess, I seek not forgiveness, I have to face what I've done. Don't shed a tear for me, I will be fine." "If I pour out your water because you poured out my water, then no one has any water to drink. I can see how much you've changed, if we let you just rot in a box, then who are we?" Wow, Burgess. "I agree, I think Miguel's changed." "See, everyone makes mistakes, Miguel, your way was just flawed, but you still have our best interests at heart. Your past and some duvots lies just led you to make some rash decisions." "No, you have both been a sliver of light in my incarceration. I'm glad I have you both with me in my final moments before leaving to meet my fate." "This isn't right." "This is as it shall be, acceptance of one's wrongs does not free one from guilt. And Burgess, don't be a hypocrite, you yourself always stood for upholding the rules, don't make the exception for me." "Thank you truly for being here with me." Wow. "We have to do something, we can't let him go like this. Yes, I'm a stickler for the rules, but maybe I'm not completely right." "Oh, you're right, let's talk to Trudy." "I knew you'd agree with me, we can't just let him suffer, he's a victim too. He needs a chance to right his wrongs, or a good man would go to waste, forever." "So shall we go and talk to Trudy? Ah, let's go." "I don't believe I'm doing this, I really dislike Miguel." I know, right? Let's track, let's track this mission so we can find what we need, crime and punishment. Um. I need, right quick to track, there we go. "Burgess believes that Miguel should have the opportunity to redeem himself. He wants to, you to go to talk to Trudy and persuade her not to send Miguel to Atara." Oh my goodness, what am I doing? I mean, if Miguel wasn't such a sweetheart, I might be tempted to say, you know what? He's made his bed, let him lie in it, but, you know, Burgess is just Burgess. "Hello, Adeline, Burgess, how can I help you? Ma, we're here to request you stop the transfer of Miguel to Atara, he's changed." "Changed? I, I wanna say he was tricked by duvots, manipulated by Manthilda, and he was, but no, he's just very sad nowadays. He wanted something that's not his to decide, and now that he's acknowledged the destruction he's left behind, he's... broken." "Go on." "He's not innocent, but he's also not a bad man, he was a victim of circumstances, he..." "Did he ask you to come here?" "No, he told us he wants to face his crimes, I just think it's not right." "Burgess, you've..." "Ma Trudy, I implore you, let Miguel face his punishment, but here in Sandrock, where he can face everyone he's wronged and atone for what he's done. Don't let him rot in a cell forever, every fibre of my being is telling me that's not right." "Adeline, what do you think of all this?" "I've seen it myself, he really has changed." "So, even Adeline agrees." "I trust you, although my gut is telling me this is a bad idea." I know, we're about to get slapped for our innocence. "I will cancel the transfer to Atara, he can, we can supervise him for a little longer in Sandrock Prison, and then I'll entrust him to you, Burgess." "You can count on me, Ma Trudy, he'll be good, I'll vouch for him." "Look, we can't take this lightly, if I see any sign of him falling back into his old ways, then I'll take the responsibility." "Okay, for now he'll work under you, the civil corps will come up with a plan for his punishment." "You can count on us, Trudy." "Prove to me this isn't a bad idea, if there's anyone that can pull it off, it's you two." Oh boy, we're gonna work this guy to the bone. "We'll make the preparations and I'll make an announcement soon. Let's first try and get the groundwork set up quietly, so as not to make too many waves around town." "Look, we did it for Logan." "You got it, ma." "I, I know, I have to say, I have my doubts, but..."
Hmm.
Phew, with Miguel out of the picture, I've had to do the books for the Portia water imports myself. And believe you me, it's not easy, more water, more problems.
Catch you later!
Ah, okay Burgess, were you gonna tell me this was all the plan for you? No, he's not like that. He really believes, and maybe we, we should give him a chance for it to be okay. "I know, I still have a bad feeling about this, but let's be kind and see how it goes." Real life, eh? Stories? It's nice to be able to do it. Ernest.
Hey there!
Uh, I got your lunch, and possibly your breakfast, it all depends on how hungry you are. There you go.
Wow, thank you so much!
I am not reading his sentimental, sentimental smell speech again, okay? Once an episode, once a, oh no, once a day. I know, I was gonna say once an episode, but you know what? That, that would have been, I read it a couple of episodes ago, and I'm still remembering it like it was today, let's, um, let's think, is it this lady, she wants, she wants the sand fish porridge stuff? Hey, just thought I'd come and say hello, hello? Here you go. Fish porridge, there you are, for you.
Thank you!
Aw, thank you, I've been behind on my orders and didn't have time to replace everything for all of it. Alrighty. Hey, Amira, how are you doing?
Mm-hmm.
I hadn't really planned to visit Portia, but now that you've almost finished the tunnel, I'd be a fool not to. Uh-huh.
I'd say you've become a great source of inspiration for me. A muse, if you will. I've grown to love the way you think. Quick, tell me the first thing that comes to your mind.
Peanuts.
It'll be a basis for my next project.
Oops.
Mm-hmm. Ah, well, I can't use that. We'll try again later.
Alright, you can't use that.
Catch you later!
I don't blame you, although if you were to make a ceramic peanut bowl, that would probably be just fine. Okay. Uh, let's go and drop off, wait, there's another blue... Okay, let's go and drop off this order, and then we'll go see what that other blue arrow is all about. What's he doing all the way out here? Oh, it's for Cooper? Alright, hi Cooper.
Howdy!
Got your commission. Oh, you want ceramics, there you go. Hey, hey, I don't care what other folks say about you, alright kid, thanks for their commission! Alrighty, let's have a look, see what else we're tracking. I know, Miguel's gonna be so mad at us. Oh, I haven't completed his order, that's why it's not coming up, let me go and get the petrified wooden sticks for, um, I know. I know, for this guy. Nearly there. Did I not put petrified wooden sticks on? Ah, well, that, that would make them rather hard to collect, wouldn't it? Okay, let us make petrified wooden sticks. Sure I didn't put them on, but... No, I didn't. Ah, don't tell him I've been so forgetful with his order, let's go talk to Miguel. That's gonna be a fun conversation. I know, right? One fun conversation coming up. "Adeline, what a pleasant surprise, I did not expect to see you again before I left." Hmm? "Trudy has cancelled my transferal, after everything I have done." Ah, you'll be released soon, ah, sorry, we've convinced her that you've changed. "I have changed, yes, but I wronged Sandrock, I betrayed you all. It's moving, even after all I've done, for Sandrock to welcome me back, to open its arms in forgiveness. Perhaps I was wrong to be so bleak, there is good in man, thank you for everything. I will pass the rest of my time in peace and aim to do as much as I can to pay back the second chance I have been given." "I look forward to my time under Burgess's tutelage, I believe there is much I can learn from him. Thank you again, Adeline, for everything." There, so you can romance him, maybe, maybe, and have a happy ending, maybe. What's on this board? Ah, okay, this is where we hire guys to do stuff. What's on this board? One star, one star, you know what, we could do the, we can definitely do the, you know what, let's just do all of these. There's the elf from Yakmal, there's the... And we know where to find damaged haulers. Okay. There's nothing else on the bounty board? What? Rude! I've run out of bounties! Okay. So damaged haulers for Elsie. Um, we might as well do that while our petrified wood is cooking. Let's, uh, let's go. Confirm. I know, we might even get an engine out of it this time, we'll be fine. Maybe, maybe we'll be fine. Alright, so what we're doing, uh, in this run, is we're gonna grab... This one. Alrighty, damaged haulers by five. Better remember now, not to stop until we get, get five of them done. That was such lucky. Sweepers. Open chest. Destroy it. Wait, is that something over here I should be paying attention to? Yes. Boom. Down we go. Not gonna complain about bronze bars. Let's go. Trotter. Honey bumble ant, boom. Rocket rooster, boom. Ooh, I didn't expect to be able to do some of that. Damaged sweepers. Treasure chest. Alrighty, there's our door, let's go. Treasure chest. Oh, these look like our damaged haulers, yes. We only need five of them, then we're out of here, okay? So, boom, one, two. Damaged sweeper. Damaged hauler, three. So two more to go, open that chest. Wait, the little hatchet sign to appear, let's go. I missed those when we were down last time. Sweeper, damaged hauler, what about that one? Three, four. Beautiful. So it looks like we could get this in just this layout, without having to go down to the next, like, the next level for it. Open that chest. Some camera piece for that. Some parts. Dump. There's our last damaged hauler open in the corner. Don't spray that stuff at me, and don't squirt at me. And bam, damaged hauler number five. Sweeper. Damaged sweeper. Bumble ant. Damaged hauler. Treasure chest. And, back this way. Let me just check on my missions, see if we've got any other things to murderate. Thorny jumpers, and wild yachmal, alpha yachmal, alright. I keep running past these. Look. Man, little bot, you should count your blessings. Oh, alpha yachmal, okay, goodie in that. Why am I not to run past any more embers? Now I'm gonna have to kill two of them when we get out of here. Alright, into the last level, I hope. Yes. You, you savage with feathered being. Stop dodging! Alright, we have finished. Grab the treasure chest. Boom. Oh, that was nice, got some ruins tokens. Tidy up after ourselves. Uh, I don't wanna exit the ruins, I've got enough to do this, and then I can go egggy area. Right, that's our first civil corps commission done, we need to turn that into Elsie, I believe, who has a thing for people beating up large machines, and she pays them to do it. Rightio. Okay. So now we need to, uh, take out some wild alpha yakmal, and leafy thorny jumpers, that, there was a fence, oh, I'm running too fast with this thorny, and I'm sorry game. I'm pretty sure there are some, some thorny jumpers down in that other area, but I'll leave them for the minute, um, because I know there are some over here on this side as well. So we'll find them first, these ones first, so I'll go back that way if I have to, it's a bumble ant. No, they all look like barrel cactuses to me. Um, there's our alpha yakmal, boom. That looks like a thorny jumper, boom. Don't stomp your feet at me. Alrighty. Oh really, it, it is coming after me. It won't let me jump and attack at the same time, I was trying for a jump attack. Might as well murder this bird as well. Alright, I'm looking for one more alpha yakmal. Pretty sure it's just one more alpha yakmal. Alright, we are tracking... Uh, that one. And that one, rightio. There it is. Alright, that should be our third alpha yakmal. Now we're looking for thorny jumpers. Although it is coming onto dusk, so we should be able to see them a lot more easily, because they like to get up and move around at this point. I probably should have stuck with, um, going where I knew they were. So what I'm doing is I'm actually looking for them now. Um, alright, so it does look like we're gonna have to go over to this other side. Alright, so I do remember seeing a whole bunch of them down in this area. Okay, two. Three. Four. Alrighty, let's go turn these, let's go turn these in. Okay. So Hugo will be down at Grandma's. So Hugo will be down at Grandma's business. So we go get that, that's closer. Uh, and then, then I think we've also got Elsie. Avio, hey, how you doing?
Haru. I'm really going to miss him. He even gave me the recipe for his concealer and sunscreen. He said I can make them myself in the future. But I feel like it really means he's gone.
Avio. Aw, man. Hey Jasmine. What are you doing out so late? Hugo.
Howdy.
Civil Corps Commission. That's what dropped in quick, that's good info, helps me get my customers paired with the right tool. Uh, as soon as the customers know how to use the tool, they shouldn't have any problems. Hey Jasmine, what are you doing out?
Hello!
Oh Peach, where's my yachmal doll? Why can't I find it anywhere? Hey Builder, that's, what's there to see on the outside? Have you ever seen a skyscraper, like the ones in my book?
So long, partner!
So long, partner. Little partner. Speaking of partners, I had a talk to um, Owen. Being chased by running foodstuffs. Alright, let's go find Elsie. Boom. There we go. Uh, she's not down here, maybe she's up here. There she is, hey Elsie.
Hey!
Got your super core.
I love it so much!
Thank you kindly, partner, I just love studying stuff like this, makes me feel closer to nature, you know? But I just know someone like you went out of your way not to hurt the buggers too much. Uh, sure. Those whistles get the job done, don't you worry your pretty little head about it.
Hey!
Hey!
Fancy seeing you around again, partner. Are you trying to edge out me and as my new best friend? Yeah, that's right, this town ain't big enough for the both of y'all.
Is so true. Is my very mature response. I know, right? Okay. We need to go and deliver this last commission here. Oh, is that Rocky? I don't know if Rocky's gonna be awake at this time of night. Hang on a minute. Maybe I'm at the wrong place. It's what, twenty-two, twenty-seven? Man, Crystal's gonna be like, why are you doing here? Oh, I'm not confused. I, I just have a delivery to make, there's my new goat, as soon as I get her stable. Yeah, plenty hungry. Because people actually have to sleep, Adeline. Not all of them go roaming around the desert until ungodly hours of the morning. Some of them actually know, you know, that naptime is a thing. I know, she's like, listen to who's talking. Alright, we have one more day left in the episode, let's get this girl home and see what tomorrow brings. I know it's gonna bring at least one delivery. So... There's our order for Owen, we're complete, I'll just have that on me now so that you know it's done. But let's get her home in bed. A new date has been added to the calendar. Alright, small confession, guys, I had actually had to split this episode into two parts, um... Because my sound was so bad on the um... On the last part of this initial one that I um... Alrighty. Well, guys, this is essentially part B of episode forty-four, I did have to cut it into two parts, uh, because... I um, I had some serious sound troubles that completely wrecked it the first time I recorded it, so, we're gonna head into it. During that time, we went from early access to full access, so the landscape, if you're wondering, is um, is changed. I'm not sure what they wanted with the little ducks, I begin to suspect that they wanted a date. Um, I have news for them though, and news for Adeline, is that I think the beginning, um... Well, not the beginning, I think the play is now so different, we may have to start a new series, but not yet. From Heidi, dear Adeline, now introducing two fantastic new devices, Construction Junction's very own factory control panel and greenhouse panel. Purchase now from our register, these devices can turn one of the rooms in your house into a factory or a greenhouse. Stop in today. We so have to expand this. We do. Alrighty. Let us have a look. I know... At what we're doing, I'm, I'm a little bit lost, a little bit off balance. I did try the challenge, I, I messed it up twice. By forgetting to hit record. Oh dear. Uh, so I'm just gonna record a regular series and get these, get Adeline through, we'll see what she can do. Looks like I've got a fuel problem over here, we might wanna fix that. Alright. So, no, we're good. Just confirm that, top it up, check our water. Okay, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there, let's just top it all up. Alright, now we're good. Okay. So, we're gonna reacquaint ourselves with Adeline's chore list, it's usually fairly scary. Okay, I have an order to complete. And an order to report in, let's go and report those two in and get them off our board. And then I think we might have a look at our map, because I can see a hundred and ninety billion... No, I lie, there's not that many, but there's a lot of little arrows out there that suggests that perhaps... Perhaps I have some quests I might want to uh, look to that have been added since I last played. Alright, Rocky, no, no, Rocky. Hi, got your commission.
Hey, thanks.
You're a heck of a neighbor, one of them took a piece out of one of my miners, put him on the bench for a week, can't wait to tell him you should see the other guy. Oh, that's right, we were hunting yachmal. Alright, if you thought we were quite quiet. I know, right? Because those yachmal have ears like bats. Let's go and deliver our petrified wood. I thought it was to Owen, but unless he's out for an early morning walk, I know I should learn his habits more. He might be out for an early morning walk. He is, hello Owen. Well, I think. Sharing recipes? Why are you too busy for a hug? Really? I know, I could sit there and observe him, that would be just strange. Um, wait, 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 I did actually have to see you about your commission to you, I, I got it done. There you go.
Thank you.
Got that done, quick, here's your pay, you earned it. Of course I did. Uh, you wanted to chat? Hey, heard the tunneler's almost roadworthy thanks to you, I'll make sure to get the yachmal milk ready for when the portions get here, but they'll buy around as soon as they hear how you handle those sandworms. Aw, come on Owen, you don't need to tell tall tales on my behalf. Grab that rotted wood. No, no, Adeline, reverse, where are we? I guess if you drown too many times in the town pond, they throw you away from it. Um, right, well, let's go and see what this little blue dot's about, it looks like a Heidi mission. So they've, they've made it, so you can't go expressing your romantic interest in people just to see their reaction. It has serious consequences for your relationships in uh, Sandrock.
Howdy!
Oh, hey Adeline, with everything that's been going on lately, I'm taking over teaching duty again. Wow, that's great, they need a good influence now. That's what I was thinking. So Jazz, where did you live off with Miguel last time? We were talking about the history of Stubbies and how divergent evolution was accelerated by the chemicals and biolics left behind after the Day of Calamity. I remember, that's where the lesson he let us draw, right? He said you can try and hypothesize what other creatures could have looked like. Do another one. Now, now Andy, how are you ever gonna learn with your finger up your nose? Hey! Oh yeah, accelerated divergent evolution, right, that old corker. What else has he been teaching you? He said I was real good at math, but he can get kinda boring. Math, science, literature, really? Did he talk about the free cities at all? Huh? I mean, did he teach you anything about the history of the free cities, or about how the free cities operate? No, he always said he should teach us how the world works, that we need to learn for ourselves. I thought it was kinda silly, how am I supposed to learn myself if no one will teach me? So he uh, didn't say anything? I tried to ask him about it, but honest, he just kept saying no. Yeah, I kept trying to get it out of him, but he ain't budged. That's interesting. Huh, good figure. What's sub-animal messages? Duh, it's like what Elsie does, talking to animals and junk. Yeah, let's go with that. Ahem, well, I think we better get started anyway, we have a history lesson today then. Alright, the Age of Darkness lasted three hundred years, we'll let her get on with that, shall we? Okay. So... I just grabbed that cleanup, there we go. Um, I know, treaties like you wanted to see me, I kind of know. Alright, let's head over to this blue dot, looks like there's something going on at Avio's.
Sauce, sauce!
Put the sauce in first, dear. Uh, eggs.
Look, Axe, I tried already to make your dish. By the stairs, I offer hot deals, not hot meals.
No, no! Make it like Ma used to.
Oh, Axe!
Hey, I followed the recipe, what more do you want? Well, except for the spicy bean paste, we don't have that in Sandrock. So I just made a substitute with what was available, as is the Vonroc way. Of course, haven't never tasted Cisian spicy bean paste, my heart to guess. So I substituted pepper for spicy, beans for bean, and toothpaste for paste. Ah, yes, the sweet odor reminds me of my childhood.
Ah! Gross, ew.
No, spicy!
Goodness, it's so hot, I'm sweating over here.
More spice!
Oh, really? But I added extra pepper, it's still not spicy enough for Fang. How fine it is to have a good friend with such different tastes. A good friend who never talks to me even though we see each other on a regular basis. In any case, we don't have the spicy bean paste. The only person who might have it would be the mysterious man. But it seems like he only comes around when he feels like it. How am I going to find him? Well, now I would adore for Fang to be able to partake of my gourmet cooking, and now I must bow out. For his beloved Mapo Tofu, I'm afraid he's just going to have to tough it out, or learn to enjoy it. Avio's style.
Toothpaste, Avio. Yes, Axe, exactly.
Well, if that doesn't suit you, Axe, then you go find the mysterious man yourself. Maybe he can help you, he's got channels I couldn't dream of. He is an all-powerful pal, there's even some things he doesn't have, but I do.
You're a bad birdie. What is it, honey? Um, I wanna help. Well, aren't you a good little bird?
Axe! Recipe, recipe!
What about the sauce? Don't worry, baby, I'll buy it now. That bird is seriously strange. Uh, fragrant memories, talk to the mysterious salesman. Oh, rightio, is he in town at all? I don't think he's in town yet. Um, alright, well, why don't we go find out what these other little blue dots are, and maybe we can find the mysterious man... Somewhere. It does not look like he's in, in town at all. Sometimes on these missions, you'll get him, and he'll be like, he'll, he'll, he'll appear... Earlier, but it's only Tuesday, and it's only the, the ninth of the month, so I think we've got about a month to wait. Uh, before he gets here. Uh, alright, fine, do we have any, no, we've just finished our last two commissions. Uh, oh. Alright, looks like there's something going on in the Commerce Guild, we'll go check that out. I know, we've got this important dinner this evening, and we've got this Commerce Guild thing going on. Maybe it's not going on in here, what about upstairs? Okay, it is possible I'm mistaken, and there's nothing exciting going on here after all, except maybe the commissions that I need to get. Okay, two thousand and seven, one thousand and thirty-four, thirteen hundred and fifty-nine. Alrighty, so we definitely want this one, the two thousand and seven. And the thirteen hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, we want the one thousand and thirty-four. And I think I had a nine hundred one over here, nine hundred and one. Because we're trying to save up to expand our property and our house, especially now we've got new buildings to put in. Man, they sprung that one on me, are there new recipes? So good, can I afford that? Oh my gosh, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna afford this, at least. Can I... Can I afford this? Yes. Can I afford this? Yes! Oh my gosh, we've got new rice bait to try. So good, I wonder if Fang has any recipes? If he does, his little experiment stand is gonna be um, somewhere around now, wait a minute. Alright. Okay, I was wrong, I've gotta go up one, maybe, maybe that little blue circle is now obscured by a big green circle, let's check it out. Come on, Adeline. Arnie Vivy, hi!
Hello!
Got your commission. Um, there's, how many tea leaves would you like I've got spare?
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, now is there a blue circle on my map anywhere? Nope. Well, Arnie Vivy's happy, that's her tea leaves, that was our nine hundred G order. Um... Alright, let me have a look at my map. So maybe it was that blue circle I saw, well, let's go and see what it's about. It was that blue circle, it was moving past the thing, pick this rubbish up. They need to add more rubbish achievements in, the one they've got is way, way too easy to get to. Oh. Unsure.
And that's the blue moon, where people put food in their mouths and go, nummy, nummy, whoa.
Wilson! He lost his rock! That's sad, guys, sad.
Look, buddy, I know what you're going through right now is really hard. The rules, soldier, the rules! Keep it together!
Maybe I can fish him out? What?
Ow! Why does this always happen to me?
Aw, because you're... Oh Burgess! Because you're nice.
He, he was out of control, sir, I couldn't stop him.
It's true, lock me up and throw away the key.
Nah, just wait a sec.
It looks like I'm going away for a while, take care of Wilson while I'm in the clink. I'll, I'll write you every day, don't, don't forget about me.
He's gonna put himself in the clink.
Couple of days?
Listen Burgess, for the last time, we cannot put people in the slammer for stepping in the oasis, chopping down trees, or any of that nuisanceery.
Why not?
Like, maybe you got some sand in there, some germs. Man, birds crap in there sometimes, we always have to boil our water, this is just not that big of a deal.
Think, I used to look up to you.
Oh, no Burgess.
Well, you're just gonna have to get over it, sorry you can't see this. Uh, maybe you should visit Unsure in jail sometime, I'd imagine he'd already locked himself in there.
Aw, man, yeah, the, the next, the next series, we are gonna romance Unsure, because he's just such a gorgeous character.
Oh, hello! Lovely day today, isn't it? Then again, isn't every day lovely and fabulous, Sandrock?
Uh, yes, are you okay Burgess?
Um, I've actually been meaning to- Um, I've actually been meaning to tell you about something.
Uh-oh.
You see, I consider a lot of people to be my friend, even if they don't always feel the same way about it. But you, I think you're my bestest friend in the whole wide world!
Uh, I'm glad you feel that way.
Yeah! I just know we're gonna be friends forever!
Uh-huh.
And, when you're around, I feel like I can do anything!
Oh, good.
So, here's my idea, if you're up for it.
Uh-oh.
It's probably not news to you that sometimes out in the desert, there are wild arcs roaming around. You remember arcs, right?
Uh, arid remote control cars?
Oh, no, but that does sound interesting!
Uh-huh.
Don't worry, I'll remind you. At-risk citizens of Sandrock!
Okay...
You know the type, tree choppers, cactus poachers, lunch bag stealers, litter bugs, jaywalkers, jugglers, and worst of all...
Uh, worst of all?
Water wasters! So, I'd like to commission from you a weapon. A weapon so powerful, that will take care of those arcs once and for all. That's right, those arcs will be gone forever!
Uh, Burgess.
I'd like you to get me some flowers!
Flowers?
That will kill them.
What?
With kindness!
Oh, Burgess, you're starting to scare me.
I believe that if we show these arcs the beauty of life up close, well, there's no way they could continue to wallow in their Arc Sea ways. What do you say?
Uh, I'm in.
Fantastic! I knew I could count on you! Here are some seeds to do the deed, plus a few extra for yourself. Just grow them in your garden like usual, and let me know when you're ready to obliterate those water wasters. With kindness.
Burgess, you very much worry me. All the time. Wha- what's that question mark over your head?
Wow! These flowers look beautiful!
Oh.
Made even more so knowing that they were grown with love and care in your garden!
You're very welcome.
Now, I'm ready for phase two.
Uh, okay.
I'm going to go out there and confront those arcs! And, surely you know what I'm about to ask next?
Just make sure I'm thinking along the same lines.
My friend, would you do me the honor of joining me on my righteous crusade to convert the arcs over to the side of the light?
Ah, with light as my witness, I shall-
It's Celsior! A toast to our alliance! Oop, conserve water! Better wait to drink anything till we're actually thirsty, am I right?
Uh, uh, yes.
Onward! To, over behind your house! Arc's territory! Lead the way!
Uh, sure, Burgess, let's go. He is really, really acting strange today. And I mean, maybe he drank the water before Unsure fell in it? Where am I going? Oh, wait, I see a blue dot. Okay.
(laughing) Uh, I just bought this big bucket of water, and I'm about to dump it all in the sand!
Why?
Uh, I love doing horrible things and announcing it to the world. The thrill of almost getting caught, oh, it invigorates me.
Uh...
Stop right there, Arc Sea boy! Keep the water where we can see it!
Huh? You again? The water police? And who's your sidekick? Dewdrop cop?
That's right, don't drop that dew.
Okay.
Take it easy, we, we just wanna help you.
I told you before, and I'll tell you again, I bought this water with my own money. Fair and square. If I wanna pour it on the sand, it's my right.
You're a dork.
Forgot about that, that's a really good point. No, there's something wrong about all this!
Just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
Yeah, well, I can, okay? This is the only way I know how to live. You think it's that simple? You think I could just stop wasting water just like that? Now who sounds crazy?
Hey, you're right, but he's not listening to reason! Prepare the ultimate weapon!
What?
Ready?
Hey, hold on a second, you can't do this!
Yeah, we can.
Aim!
Uh-huh.
Stow your weapons, I'll pay the fine, okay? Just, just let me go. St- stop!
Fire!
Wha- what is that?
It's a flower.
Behold, our ultimate weapon, the power of life! This flower grew from once arid lands, lands once thought inhospitable. But here in Sandrock, with the power of love and friendship and faith, and maybe some science stuff, we were able to grow something from nothing!
My, my gosh, I, I see, I've wasted my life.
Uh-oh.
Yes, a bit, but it's not too late to change!
I'm so stupid!
Aw, he's having this on, right?
There, there, sir, we all make mistakes.
Shut up, water boy! I'm so incredibly dumb!
No, no, listen, my name's Burgess and-
I'm sorry, I'm too foolish to learn your name, or do anything else for that matter.
What?
I can't do anything right! I've wasted my life!
Uh-huh.
Well, um, even a foolish person could understand that it's bad to waste water.
Even me?
Yeah.
Well, I do think you're being a bit hard on yourself, but, yes, I believe literally anyone could make the decision to not waste water!
I, you're right, water man, I'll do it! I'll burn some, I mean, I'll stop wasting water forever!
Hooray!
Hooray indeed! Now where can I buy some matches?
Oh, no!
Try by the stairs. It's by the stairs, in the center of town.
Burgess, don't tell him that.
Thank you, water police, and you too, Dewdrop, you've changed my life.
He's gonna burn the town down instead.
Nice one! See? Everyone can be good if they adopt the right mindset! Let's set out on patrol for more water wasters!
Uh, but wait, Burgess, I think that guy was-
It's out of our jurisdiction now, and justice will handle it.
Justice will handle it? I don't think justice is gonna like you very much very soon. Um... Okay, wh- where are we meant to be going, Burgess? Oh, I see, water-wasting territory. I have another little blue dot to investigate. Blue dots.
Man, what is up with them Sandrockers? So what if I use more water than needed to take a bath? It's not like that'll make a difference.
Aw, seriously, these guys.
You know what? I'm gonna waste a bunch of water, that'll show 'em.
Stop, in the name of the guidelines!
What?
Huh? Water cop, get out of here, I just wanna use some extra water, is that a crime? Is that so bad?
Uh, you see, if everyone thought like you, then there would be less water for all involved. Wouldn't that be a sad day?
That's, but I just can't help myself!
Oh, rubbish.
I know you can do it, I know you can conserve water!
Forget about me, water cop, it's too late.
Don't be such a crybaby.
Crybaby? All, all I ever wanted was a helping hand, such indignity!
What?
Oh, woe is me, how am I to break this habit?
Here, I'll help you.
Stop with all that loser talk, and behold!
Wha- what is that?
Life! Ch-ch-ch-ch-ch-check it out!
Life? Wow, that's cool.
This flower overcame all odds and bloomed in the desert. If life can find a way, why can't you?
You're right, I can't be bested by some lame, stupid baby pansy flower.
Well, hey, don't-
Yeah, I'm gonna be the best man I can be. I'm gonna go back to the pet food workshop, and I'm gonna crank out more kibbles and bits than all the other Sandrockers you know can buy.
Hi, well, that sounds pretty good, I think.
Don't stop me, water cop, I'm my own man now, I'm gonna buy a stock.
O- okay.
He's seriously worrying me. Okay, where have we gotta go now, Burgess? I see, over there. Okay, let's go, arcs of the Covenant, seriously, guys. There's the evil rooster chicken. Alrighty, I know, I'm gonna turn it into chicken kibble in a minute. Ooh, I'll have that. I know, Burgess, you, me, sandberries, we can have a snack. Maybe, I mean, I can just dry them, that might be even better. Down here?
Behold, I am the arbiter of chaos!
Benny!
Water goes wherever I please! Ha-ha-ha-ha! Splish splash, drip drip, glug glug glug, ah! Water, water everywhere, but not a drop to drink!
I... Burgess, this man needs intervention.
Oh no, the arbiter of chaos, what are we gonna do?
Well, no one can arbitrate chaos just by definition.
I see your point, and choose to ignore it! Ha-ha-ha-ha-ha-ha! Chaos!
Uh-huh.
Oh no, this guy's off the rails!
Uh-huh.
We need to employ the proper countermeasures, gaze upon this image, and let your spirit be healed!
Aye, aye, suddenly the whole world makes sense. The symmetry of the petals, the stockiness of the stem, the intoxicating fragrance!
And roses?
It's as if all the chaos has taken shape and arrived in this perfect form! Like it all led to something, there, there was never any chaos to begin with! It was all leading to this moment! This, this is what life is all about!
Okay.
Yeah, well, flowers are pretty cool, but there's actually a lot more this world has to offer.
Silence! My purpose in life is clear now, to look at flowers, that is all I must ever do!
Uh...
The mist, the mist of chaos has been dispelled. Now I see only clear skies. Goodbye, think of me whenever you do something intelligent, because I'm so enlightened now!
Whoa.
Well, I'm not sure we really helped that guy, but at least we got him to stop wasting water, let's call it a win.
Uh, yeah, cause I don't know what else to call it, seriously.
So many arcs today! Gosh, if you weren't here, I don't think I could have converted any of them. Your poignant remarks scratched the surface of their very souls, it was real neato! The world is definitely a better place now that there are three less water wasters around.
Uh-huh. That was great, you got through to them.
Well, hey, not just me, we, we got through to those water wasters! Me running up to those tourists by myself makes me seem like an annoying, yappy little chihuahua, but together, well, we seem like a legit organization! One person approaching you out of the blue to yell at you, lonatic. Two, gotta be a thing, here's a little something for your trouble. Spoiler alert, it's water! Thank you so much, let's hunt arcs again soon!
I wonder if we can gather water out of that? No, does not look like it. Burgess, we left the water container behind, that's wasting. Burgess? Alright, I, I think, I think I've gotta go and, yeah, I've now gotta go and see Unsure, who's put himself in prison for leaping into the drinking water to save his clay statue buddy Wilson. I'm a little worried about him. He's far too hard on himself.
Hey, thanks for visiting me.
You're welcome.
Looks like things got real mixed up. Now I'm on the other side of the law, never thought I'd see this happen.
You put yourself in there, mate.
I'm like the Oasis version of Logan, driven to madness by my raging emotions. Suddenly I have a lot more sympathy for that guy.
Uh, somehow I think Wilson would have survived.
Yeah, you're right, Wilson can breathe underwater, I kinda forgot about that in the heat of the moment.
Oh.
Now I hate to break up this, uh, teary little reunion, but I did some poking through the civil court official code, better cross-checking through the town charter.
Huh?
As it turns out, in section seven, subsection P of the town charter, which clearly states, "No citizen shall contaminate the oasis in any capacity under penalty of..." Uh, well, skip that part.
Skip that part.
There is a clause, that just is clearly states, "The aforementioned penalty shall not be incurred to any officer of the law who deems it necessary at or above a certain rank."
Huh?
Furthermore, it is civil court tradition to reward those who go above and beyond the call of duty, those who risk their lives for that of another, those who throw all caution to the wind and do what they know in their hearts to be right.
Wow, justice, that's big.
Unsure, I hereby award you the title of deputy.
Oh my, I, wha?
Which also means you are free to go, so, get back out on patrol, please.
Just when I was about to get a face tattoo, better go, chat later.
Face tattoo, he is funny.
I hope I can once again count on you to come through as our town's most reliable builder, and fix us up one more hat.
One more hat.
We even got a new design in. You know the hat business, feels like every time you get a new one, it's obsolete in a few months. Yeah, here you go, a recipe for a super deluxe deputy hat, with built-in plating for extra protection for the most extreme of combat situations.
Oh, no!
Oh, shoot, uh, see if Unsure brings it up. Like I said, this old deputy sheriff thing, it's all just something I made up. I mean, come on, I made the cat deputy. I thought everyone would get a kick out of that, but a couple people got kinda mad. Anyway, Unsure takes it real serious, but yeah, it's not really a thing. Just take the super deluxe deputy hat to Unsure when it's ready, he'll be over the moon.
Oh, no, that is awesome, make a deputy hat. Hey, deputy captain, how you feeling? Uh, right, I see. Okay, thank you, I'm dismissed apparently. Alright, lifter bots and masked fiends. And I have two days to do it in. Sure, let's go find some lifter bots and masked fiends. Um, I wonder if I have them in my, uh, thing, and I also wonder if the, the mysterious man is here, let's go and, um... Let's go and check out this green arrow, I think it means I have a, a d- delivery. You know, I read that Pa- that is Pabloanian, not just Pablo and Ronan. I know, sad days, right? Sad days. Uh, there's a chest over here. I have a horrible feeling it's actually up on the, um... Escarpment. Okay. And which case it may be right under the escarpment. Why was I going this way? Because I was looking for a little green arrow, and then that, that meeting happened, and some dastardly townsfolk person hurried to the meeting. Alright, it looks like it's an invisible chest just for the moment, or it's... I don't know, lurking, we'll find it one day. Alright, let's go. Alright, let's go. We, uh, we have a meeting at six. We have to go and visit the saloon. I know, one of the charges for running the deputy over. Hi, oh wow, I have, um, I have this commission for you. There you go.
Thank you.
Uh, and, and I see you would like your other commission now. Well, I have this commission for you as well.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Alrighty. So, so our, our budget must be looking a lot better than it was. Um... I still have to make a great sword, radio, but I also have to go and visit the meeting. I think the meeting is the one in the, in here, isn't it? The Blue Moon Saloon. Alrighty, let's go. Hopefully this will work this time. Alright, I'm lost. Where's my calendar? Attend the development meeting at eighteen hundred. So we are, we are right, it's like nearly here. Let me just go out and come back in again. Alright, eighteen hundred, yes. There we go, that looks much more promising. Alright.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many wonderful faces here tonight. I wanted to invite you to discuss the future of Sandrock without being crammed into the stuffy city hall this time. With the recent opening of the Road to Portia, we have access to water like never before, as well as being able to finally increase our access to trade and tourism. All of this was only made possible thanks to the efforts of everyone here at our wonderful town. So, I would like to propose a toast to Heidi, to the builder, to everyone, to Sandrock!
To Sandrock!
Recently, I have been soliciting the opinions of Sandrockers regarding the future development of our town and infrastructure. This time, I'm glad to see everyone's excited about our future for once. We have a couple of proposals to go through tonight. So, without further ado, it is with great pleasure I introduce our wonderful Mian and Zeke to discuss theirs.
Ooh.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Recently, I have been working with Zeke on a plan to plant a forest in the Ufala Outback that could block the sandstorms from Sandrock almost entirely. We've already demonstrated some success with the little woods near Gecko Station, but with Portia water, we'll be able to scale up substantially. But I'm not the expert here, so Zeke can explain everything in more detail.
Oh dear.
Zeke?
Uh...
Don't worry, just go over it like we rehearsed. You can do it.
Right, sorry, just a little nervous. Been a while. The Ufala out back in the north is, uh, really big. It's got lots of land and sand. If we plant trees there, they can stabilize the terrain and stop the runoffs.
Economy?
This isn't some small project, though. Uh, it'll probably cost City Hall a lot of money. No, sorry, didn't mean to say that.
Talk about how it'll help Sandrock.
Right, uh, if we use more water from Portia, we should be able to maintain a large enough forest in the Outback to lessen or even stop the sandstorms. We, uh, we'll finally get a sustainable Sandrock.
Oh wow.
And there you have it.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Mian, Zeke. We've been discussing this possibility for a very long time. Now that we finally have the know-how and Mr. Musa's backing, we might just be able to pull it off. Do you have a more detailed plan? What do we need to do first?
Uh, well, I guess I wanna do a test planting on the Outback sands first. The sand over there is drier and the water table is much lower, for that we'll need a small irrigation tower in the area.
Good idea with the test. I'll expedite a budget for that. Does anyone else have something to say about this proposal?
Sure, I'll build the irrigation tower.
Makes me proud to see a guild member being such a go-getter.
I knew I could count on you. I'll help out as well.
Thank you, builder. Commissioner away.
I mean, I'd like to help with the tower and the planning, but there wasn't really an option for that.
Thank you all.
Maybe I get a chance to.
Now, on to our second proposal. Heidi, if you please?
Good evening, everyone. To the natives here, do you remember Miss Bliss? Yeah, me too. She was the best darn teacher this side of the alliance. And I am who I am today because she pushed me to always do my best. We don't have that for our children today. We haven't had a school since a sandstorm blew down the old one. I'd say it's about time we built a new one.
Miss Bliss put the fear of light in me.
Miss Bliss put the fear of light in me.
So I've got a proposal that's been sitting there the whole time, since our old minister, whose name I shall not mention, took off. Pretty literally, her destroyed house is just sitting there. Perfect location for a school.
Wow, that's so great! When do we start the PTA? I'll volunteer for everything!
I'll look out.
Can Elsie go back to school?
Hi, I ain't a kid.
I think it goes without saying that I fully approve of this proposal as well. In fact, I've already submitted a job advertisement for a schoolteacher.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
I wonder if we'll get one, like, another romantic.
This school project and the new forest will be our town's primary focus going forward. I think if we can achieve both, we'll finally get more people to settle here. Folks, we're really close now.
We stand ready to do our part, ma'am. Right, everyone?
Yep.
Yep.
Let's do it.
This team is so reliable. I feel like we could build anything if we put our minds to it.
Yan's never praised me before.
Oh no, it's not Yan, Mia, that's the good brother.
I'll spread out the assignments amongst us after I have a talk with Heidi. We'll all pitch in together and get that school looking like the pride of the Ufala.
I never used to believe in good and evil twins, but here you are, proving us all wrong. Anyway, I hope the meeting was useful in letting y'all know a bit more about what's in store for us. I'm still open to more proposals, so if you have ideas for Sandrock, please bring them forward. Let's do our best for our city-state. So let's leave it there for tonight. Everyone, eat up. Owen went out of his way to give us a real feast for tonight. And remember!
Conserve water, yow. Oh my goodness, there's so much to, to look and do. Alrighty. Well, why don't we just let these question marks settle? Oh, no, I've walked in too.
And so, my fellow Sandrockers, I begin my proposal as many famous proposals have begun with the beginning. Someone once told me that the dictionary defines beginning as the point in time or space at which something begins. Or something like that, and I believe that time is now.
Oh my god.
Friends, Sandrockers, countrymen, lend me your ears. Too long has our train station stagnated in development. Sure, we gave it a touch-up when Musa came by, but how long has that been? And certainly if Musa likes trains, everyone should like trains.
For it was four scores and seven minutes ago that I began to have a dream.
Oh no.
That of a new attraction being birthed quite literally unto our fine citizens. An attraction with the power to revitalize attentiveness towards our town.
Oh my goodness.
And so I say, that's not what trains can do for you, but what you can do for trains.
The answer is simple. We somehow crossbreed Mardle Duck and the Yakmal in order to produce the Super Flying Yakmal.
Oh no.
We ain't gonna lose to them winged buffalos up north.
What you can do for trains being, eh, agree to my proposal of building a high-speed bullet train for Sandrock.
A high-speed bullet train?
In addition to being a spectacle, this bullet train will produce milk on a level never before conceived by imagination.
Yes, just imagine the joy of traveling to and from Sandrock riding on a Super Yakmal. What'd you say? Hey, that's my idea!
What's the big idea there, pal? I'm speechin' over here. You got your train speech, my Yakmal speech.
What do you mean? I was just minding my own business when you got your Yakmal and my train speech.
Uh, I, I like Cooper's idea.
Checkmate, you big train lobbying sick fan? Back to me, here's my plan. Way I figure, we just give that science feller a bunch of shiny discs and he'll invent a machine that does what I want, then a builder will build it. That's how it always works, ain't it? He just invents whatever is convenient at the time.
Well, regardless, I think I'm not too big to admit that a giant, super flying Yakmal, it's a pretty good idea. If you think it's possible.
Oh my god.
As they say...
I don't think we should let these two together.
Crossbreed'll make super lemons, and shucks, m- maybe I was a bit too hard on you there, partner. Sure, a, a bullet train, why not? I mean, sounds a bit violent, might throw a hot box off, but me, myself, I enjoy a good bullet. If it's in the right place, put her there.
Wow, to finally earn the respect of my next-door neighbor after all these years. Put her there!
Oh.
Together.
Oh no, th- that's gonna be an interesting speech when they, uh, when they get to it. I'm sure it's, oh, an invisible meeting point, I see.
How you holding up, Cat? Not like you to be so quiet at meetings like this. What gives?
Yeah, I've got some ideas, but I'm just mulling them over a bit. You know, not everything has come up spades for me lately. I'm thinking I need to slow down and think things through first.
Need a friendly ear?
Ah, alright. Let's see, I've been thinking about my entrepreneurial career so far, and...
Go on.
You remember how I always talk about Katori World, right? It's always been my dream to... Uh, I actually wanted to pitch the idea to Musa, you know? But when I was talking to him while he was in town, something he said stopped me. He questioned if I was fully committed to my business. I wanted to answer, of course I am, but then, I'm not so sure. And that got me thinking. My entire goal coming out here was to create a better life for my son. But I sure am doing a terrible job at it.
We'll all help you, Katori.
I know. But I'm afraid, afraid that I'll never have time for my son anymore. Or that whatever I try next will fail and you'll all be in for a big disappointment. That's why I didn't give Trudy anything this time.
Okay, you just take your time. You'll figure it out. We'll always be here, ready to lend a hand.
There you go, guys.
I needed the pep talk.
I don't know if it was a pep talk so much as a show of support. Didn't I see, yeah, look, if you look on the mini-map, you can see little miniature circles.
We'd better get prepared. I'm so excited.
Uh oh.
Getting prepared. Getting prepared for what?
Oh, you know, textbooks, study materials, stationerys, and it's never too early to start greasing up some connections. I'm gonna start writing to the Vincent Design Institute's admissions office.
I'll look out.
Oh yeah, that sounds, uh, cool. Say, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't your baby not even out yet?
Rocky, rocky, rocky. There's no such thing as too early. Most parents of children at Pebble's age already got their kids' education all planned out. It's much easier to win the race if you get a head start, don't you know?
Oh my gosh.
Uh, win the... race?
Wow, uh, dang, Rocky, Pebble's future, get it together, man!
You think?
Oh no, what have I done to him?
Yeah, you get it. Rocky, take some notes here. Preparation is key.
Oh, this is not good.
I don't think I can really abide by all that.
Better safe than sorry.
Oh no, that's funny. For a minute I thought he was gonna jump at it and just, you know... But no, he looks like he's got his head screwed on right, not pushing his kid too hard. Alright, let's go and have a look in here.
Logan, did you get to talk to Trudy about that outpost idea?
Oh yeah, I saw you talking to Trudy before the meeting. How'd it go?
She's still thinking about it.
Huh? What do you mean she's thinking about it? Spit it out, Logan.
Look out.
Well, she didn't outright say yes, she asked me what I wanna do. I said, protect Sandrock, hunt monsters, maybe get a lookout tower built. She said, sure, write up a proposal.
Oh, that's good.
That means yes! Good going, Yak Boy.
Yeah, glad Trudy liked your idea. Somehow you don't seem all that pleased, though.
Thing is, writing up plans, eh, I ain't good at that.
Uh, you don't wanna write it? Well, I guess I could try, although my handwriting has been a subject of criticism at times.
Come on, you guys are overthinking it. Just write exactly what you mean. Trudy wouldn't ask you to write something up if she wasn't seriously considering it.
There you go.
And who knows, you might even find that writing out your ideas'll give you new insights.
Well, when you put it that way, yeah, alright, I'm gonna give it a shot.
There you go.
Let me know if you need help.
Good one, Owen. I know, you think they're the most confident people in the world and then you put them under that little spot of pressure and they're like, oh my god! That's funny. Okay, so that's our town meeting. Where are we going? Is it late? It may be late, we may need to go to bed. Oh, it's only nineteen oh three. Well, I suppose we should go and look to this commission, maybe get that set before we go to bed. We need to talk to the mysterious salesman. Wait, I've got orange circles on my thing. Oh, well, I have to deal with those then. Do that first. And then we'll see if there's time for commissions before bed. I think I've only got one or two outstanding now. Okay, Trudy, what are you doing?
You know, lately, I've been thinking about Matilda. Although she was a Devogian agent, she used to be kind and pleasant to everyone. Her speeches at the fireside chats were often inspiring. At the time, I was envious. I thought, that's what a mayor should be.
You're the real mayor of Sandrock.
It's not an easy job, but I'll always try to be the best mayor that the Sandrock citizens deserve, anyway. Even though I don't approve of Matilda's actions, I can still learn from her qualities. I think in the future, I need to be more confident when communicating with our citizens, so that they can be assured that things are getting done.
There you go.
I have a lot of room for improvement in this area. I'll work hard and figure it out.
You will. Alright, well, that, that's good to know. Why don't we go and see what this other little orange arrow is? My, time flies. This is a very long, long episode, I apologize. But I think it's worth it, we get to see a lot of the new, the new bits and pieces that got put in, and, um... Uh oh, ow, oops, oh dear. I know. We also need to get that bean paste, although I think we have to wait for the mysterious man for that. He does appear, um, twice, he appears on two days of the month, I just can't remember which ones they are. We can go talk to Zeke. And here, okay. Zeke? Where'd you go? He's... Hey, what's up?
Ah, I was nervous because usually Trudy handles all the talking in a presentation.
Uh huh. And, are you okay? You must be okay, is that all? Alright. Okay, so now, oh, now I've got a blue arrow. Somewhere out here. Is that talk to the mysterious? Surely not. Is he in already? He might be in. Is he in already? He might be in early. I don't think so, though. Let's have a look at our map. I don't think he arrives. I think he's usually the end of the month. Alright, well, it looks like it's time to get our character off to bed. Might just drop her home. We'll let her, we'll let her not run across the city this time. We'll just let her go. When the Yakmal cart arrives? I know. What would you rather do, deliver a speech or ride in this particular Yakmal cart? Along the edge of a cliff? Oh, look, I'm thinking the Yakmal cart would still be more... Less, less horrifying. Here we go. I forgot to pick up my delivery. Oh my gosh, my inventory is full. Say it ain't so! There we go. I need to, I need to clean out my bags and boxes and things. There we go, a bit more. Drop it in. We really need to have a look at some of these, um... Some of these statues and things we've got. Alright. I need to create a steel greatsword. Let's get one of these cooking. Just the one? Yes. I can make two, but we'll, we'll make one. Let's get some recycling going, 'cause I'm pretty sure we haven't worked our way through our list of recycling materials yet. Um, put some fine wood scrap on. I know, I'd like to make those queues bigger. Can I upgrade? No, I can't upgrade my machines any more than they are. Do I have anything that needs to go through on this? Nope, that looks pretty good. What about over here? No? Okay, looks like we've caught up with our, um... With our commissions. Okay, now I think we're good. Unless I've built a steel greatsword. What am I low on? Well, I don't need any more ceramic plates, my goodness. Granite tiles, though, let's make a few more of those. And whack some silver ingots on after it. There we go. See, now it's twenty-two fifteen. My time goes when you're having fun. Alrighty, we've got... We might make some more chromium steel bars. Looks like, I might make a double batch, actually. Yeah, 'cause we're running low. There we go, get those going. Uh, the ore refinery, got two hundred and six stone. Might get some of those going. Bloodstone's always useful. Let's see what else we've got. Chromium pick. Magnesium, aluminium alloy. Let's get a little bit of that going. But in fact, we, we're so low, we'll get a double batch of it going. That'll help a bit. I haven't even made things. Let's check out our furnace. Make sure it's, yeah, it's running good. Um... Alright, marble. Copper. You know what I could do with a little bit more of this, um, this fluoride. We do, we do tend to run out a little bit. Check the chickens. They look hungry and in need of petting. Pat the chicken. They will, will wake up for pats. There you go. That's so cute. Alright, and then we'll add... Just top up their food. Clear out the chicken house, 'cause we've maxed it out again. Check in the cooking, see what we can make. We can make a hundred and forty-one tomato and egg soups. Let's just stick with thirteen of them. Um... Let's make some steamed sweet potato. Alright, that'll keep that going overnight. Looks like I don't have anything to harvest in here. Um, they look okay. Alright, I think it might be time for our characters to go and get some sleep. And guys, it's also time for us to finish this episode here. No part C's for you. Uh, next episode, we will move on to the new material and see, um, see what's going on while the material I haven't played yet. But on that note, I'll bid you adieu. If you enjoyed the episode, please hit like if you wanna see more. Please hit subscribe. I'll check you later. Take care out there.